Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so public communication at this time to address the council about any items not listed on the agenda, if you wish to address the council on an item listed on the agenda, please follow the direction below. I don't know if we are doing blue cards. Do we have?
There are blue cards up there.
Okay. So is there any person from the public that would like to comment?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports and discussions. Do we have any council announcements and/or reports? Not hearing any? Administration reports? Not hearing any. So moving on to consent to calendar. There's nothing on this. So right to the regular business, goals and priorities workshop. So I imagine, Brian, this is your show?
I'll kick it off.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I think this was a good process from last year to establish what the goals and priorities were for the budget cycle going forward. Last year, staff were directing or walked away with three priorities. One of those was fire equipment, public safety. The other one was customer service. And the one? Customer service, public safety, I think it was infrastructure and roads. So those are the three things that we focused on in the budget last year. So this year, we're going through the process. And what you're going to see today is staff have done a great job, I think, articulating some of the things they've accomplished this current fiscal year, year-to-date, and then also have tracked and articulated some of the things that they're working on right now that are going to carry over into the next fiscal year. For example, Highway 162 is kind of one of those big projects. And then certainly, they're going to present to you all some asks, some requests, like seeing the budget next year, provided they're adequate resources to address those needs. I think it's a good process to go through to try to articulate what staff are looking for as far as the needs to meet, the services they're trying to provide for our community members. Obviously, there's a lot of times when the asks exceed the resources available. So that's where it's a great process to go through today of the priority setting session to really kind of narrow down the focus is going to be. So that's what all the department heads will go through, and I'll just kind of kick this off. See where we're aiming and...
Where's Jim?
Next slide, please. I have to stay flipped on it. My bad.
Is it working now?
Yeah. All right, okay. Program overview, we can just cover that really quickly. And once we go through, I'll give the quick overview here in a second. The departments will go through with the information that they put together. And then I figured at that point, we'll try to break and grab some lunch, and then reconvene and really talk about the council priorities. So really quick, for this fiscal year, the city is in very solid state. Now despite what you made here, again, the city has not spent a penny of the reserves that the council has built up over the years. $9 million reserve, which is very, very healthy. It's over 30% general fund, our budgeted expenditure, which is, again, extremely healthy. This year, this year's budget, mid-budget, $4 million in Measure U funds for capital projects, capital asset replacement funds, and road projects. Those were three big focus areas that we focus on this year. I would say this year, we're probably more staff than we've ever been as well, with the exception of obviously, some departments were still trying to ramp up. I know with law enforcement, for example, we still have some MLE vacancies and some police officers, but working very diligently to get those. So we don't anticipate much of a surplus at the end of this year, because we're trying to spend, obviously, what we budgeted. There will be some things that do get carried over and rebudgeted next year. Again, I'll just say Highway 162 again, because that project is going to get off the ground here this month, but it's not going to get completed this fiscal year. So we'll have some resources that do get carried over to the next year. Unrestricted one-time dollars that were available this year, and the two pots of money that I want to focus on are the local fiscal recovery monies, or the COVID dollars, and the RDA monies. We were expanded this year. Again, I think you have these resources available in a one-time capacity that we're able to meet some local needs. The corporation yard purchase and the budgeted infill work for that, as well as the type 1 fire engines. Two significant purchases made this year with one-time dollars that were available. I would say this fiscal year, there's very limited dollars in the fiscal recovery. There's a couple hundred thousand dollars left. So any changes going forward in this fiscal year, we'll probably need to make some sort of reductions. And I don't, we're talking more next fiscal year right now, but again, we're getting close to that point anyhow. Do you have any other question?
Yes. So have we exhausted the unrestricted one-time dollars?
So I was going to touch on this next. So we have unassigned fund balance, and Ruth and I were talking about this. And what we're going to do is we're going to come back to the councils. We're getting our preliminary report this week or next week, the year-end preliminary audit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So once we know, these one-time dollars, the fiscal recovery dollars, and the RDA monies are exhausted, there has been some money that is, right now, it's in an unassigned fund balance amount. And once we get that figure determined, we will share that with the council, and we're going to make recommendations in the budget based on your priorities, where those dollars could go. There are significant cost increases that must be included in next year's budget. I think you probably saw a couple of them on the presentation. Costs are going up, like everything else. You know, inflation drives up a lot of the costs, but then we also have other things like that are associated with labor that we'll talk about here later in the presentation. There are a number of new budget requests, all very valid requests. Budget requests will certainly see the available revenues from a regular annual basis. But again, once we figure out the unassigned fund balance, the one-time monies we have available, we will come back and kind of bring that forward, so the council has all of the information. But they were looking to get input on the prioritization of all the tasks, all the requests that have been submitted by the department heads. And certainly, if there's anything on that hasn't been articulated here, that is a priority of the council. This is obviously a great time to articulate that, too. Try to, I think the department heads and myself, we tried to listen to all you folks throughout the year and try to capture what we were hearing and what we think the city needs going forward. But certainly, it's not an all-inclusive list, I realize that. So if there's things that you folks need to add, then we will have a chance to talk about that. Questions? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth. Let me drive a quick objective for you. No, no, it's okay.
I mean, Bill has to.
We actually did go live with our new finance software. That was quite a big project. I think it's probably a year and a half.
Can you speak up, please, Ruth?
Well, we went live with our new financial software in this current year, and it was about a year and a half project. And it was quite a big project. It's still not done. We're still trying to refine processes. We want to go paperless as much as we can. We want to decentralize the AP. There's still a lot of goals to hit. There's also an option for the airport to, instead of bill, we can actually put up a file to take what, I guess it's called pull, the money out of their account. So speaking with the city attorney, he said anybody can opt into this, but going forward, we can make it mandatory. So that would really, really refine the billing process for the airport. So there's all kinds of opportunities like that that we need to keep looking for and making things more efficient. And so it's kind of done, but it's never going to be done, kind of thing. Annually, we do an annual audit. We do an annual budget, as you're all aware of. Another accomplishment was paying our transparency software. We had been paid $6,000 or $7,000 a year for transparency software on a provider that's built it for $5,000, and it's not ongoing. It was a long time. So we saved a lot of money there. Always looking for ways to save money. And now we're working on a new payroll solution. We've had two failed attempts, but I mean, it's really a big project. We're trying to go live with that July 1. And so a lot of staff time is being devoted to that. It's a big pull on our department right now. I think we have four different software things going on. We have one to calculate, one for time sheets, have one for personnel budgeting, and then the new one that we're trying to go live with. And next year, this time, we will have. So always working towards the bigger goal. Key initiatives for next year is the software conversion. And also, after the payroll is calculating, we want to go live with a time sheet conversion. And then after that, we want to automate our human resource department to where we can have everything automated, where we have an applicant that turns into employee. Right now, it's a very, very manual process, and it's going to be really good when our applicant can turn into an employee. And just a lot of opportunities to streamline manual process.
So that affects Liz's department?
That is Liz.
And she's still looking for an assistant, or is that, will that eliminate the assistant?
Oh, no, this would be in addition to, definitely. She has two positions budgeted, and I think she's going to be making, we're hoping.
We're actually going to count on the assistant to help us implement it.
Yeah.
So the assistant must have that skill set. Okay.
So initiatives are, I talked about streamlining, automating billing, looking, always looking for less paper, manual processes, trying to electronic. As staff is needed, I have two openings right now. So if you know anybody who'd like to apply, it's on the website. A new initiative I have is to prepare and deliver a five-year forecast. I think this is really important, because I keep saying our expenses are rising more than our revenues. And when you can go into debt $12 million in one year, this is just critical that we look at least five years out and see what that looks like. We're planning for it now. I mean, it might feel like we're having a lot of surpluses, but we don't expect that to last. We expect our expenses to catch up with our revenues quick. And we really need to address in this budget how we're going to address that $12 million liability that we got in one year. We refinanced our pension bonds for $17 million, and we turned around and got a brand-new bill for $12 million. So keeping our fingers crossed that helpers does good this year, but who knows? I'll continue to let you know how that's going. I think I brought in consultants to give you a presentation on that, and I'll continue to work with them. And if there's new information, you'll be updated. And then we're all working on a new city website.
Budget request, I'm talking with Brian, and this seems like a good idea to have an accounting manager as succession planning, but also to help with my workload. Yes?
I want to go back to the new initiative, prepare and deliver five-year financial forecast. So did I hear a reservation in your presentation in regards to, and see, this is how I see it. Measure U came in. Before that, we were at a huge deficit. We've been spending money. And so I come from the famine, now it's the feast. And do you feel like we have been spending to where we're at a line where we need to pump the brakes and say, we got to go conservative?
I do. I always feel that way, because it's my job to watch the money for you. But I feel like if you have a five-year forecast, then it would help you to make decisions going forward.
I like that.
How adding all this stuff that we're doing is going to affect us in the future, because it isn't going to last.
No, it never does. Yeah.
I think, I can add on to that. We're just talking about, obviously, living within our means on an annual basis, right? So if our budget...
Like we do in our own households.
Exactly. So with that said, I mean, the city has, I think, gone through a period in time where, I think you stated it very well, from famine to, I wouldn't say peace, but completely opposite of that. So we've been able to use some one-time dollars. We've had some one-time dollars available. And again, I think, once we figure out what the unassigned fund balance is, we're going to make the recommendations. And some of those might be, depending on what that dollar is, funding, obviously, depending on what the priorities are, if there's enough in there to fund some one-time projects, road issues. But it wouldn't be smart to, when we have a healthy reserve, but when we get down the road, if our revenues, and if we're living year-to-year on our revenues and our expenditures, and our expenditures we know are rising, and they are rising quicker than the revenue right now, in the future, let's say, like in the budget, you're going to see five police cars in the future. What if we have money saved for that?
Better idea.
So, you know, there's a way to address what we know will be future needs in some of these funds. So we're looking at both short-term and long-term.
All right.
I do think it's going to be prudent to, we have to be able to live within our means. And then once we know, again, having one-time dollars available, and I've said this to many, it's, we have to balance that as well, because we have these dollars, and they're there for the benefit of the community. You know, there comes a point when you're saving too much. So, and again, and I hate to say that, but I don't want to come across like it's reckless, because I don't want to be that, come across that way. But if you have a good, healthy reserve, and you have these other fund accounts funded for future, for future needs, you do have to, obviously, you want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our constituents. So same time, it's a balance.
We need to be deliberate about our spending, and we need to know what the future looks like. And we just need to make sure that we're sustainable. You know, when we first got the new sales tax, we couldn't spend it. We had years where we just tried to budget it, and we couldn't spend it, because we didn't have the staff. Well, now we have the staff, and we're, we just need to know where that line is.
I don't think we had the wherewithal. And so we now have experts, projectory experts on board, you Phil, that we can make a sustainable five-year financial plan.
And obviously, the biggest one is under liability, pension under. That's just...
We're never going to catch it.
...control, and we can't manage that. We don't, that is definitely the biggest concern. So hopefully, they have a good investment year that helps with that.
Well, we've been hoping for how many years? So what's the definition of, okay, thank you so much.
Without adding to a workload, I think, in a perfect world, we should, it's almost like two budgets, the one that we have to live with, and the one that, in a perfect world, what that would look like, in the context of a lot of deferred maintenance, and especially when it comes to the roads, which has been, obviously, a big conversation. And in a perfect world, if we had a regular schedule, what would that actually take? What would that cost? And then obviously, there are things that you can defer, right, that saves money, but then creates downline issues, which, coming back to this one-time expenditure, some of this extra spending is in part because there was a lot of deferred, you know, things that we could just delay. But, you know, now that times are a little better, we've been able to do that. So I think you have to separate between the ongoing annual budgetary, you know, payroll in particular. I mean, you just, folks got to get paid, and you got to pay certain things. And then there's other things that you can, the proverbial kicking the can. But it would be interesting to understand, in a perfect world, to take care of Orville's, all of its needs, infrastructure needs, well, what would that actually cost? It might be kind of scary.
Again, if you have a capital asset, a capital project plan, capital asset plan, again, that's what we're building towards, trying to fund these accounts. But then you have a plan, and ultimately, you try to save for that on an annual basis. So when you need to do road, again, there's capital, there's a couple of capital projects that have to do with some of our museums. Again, they've been deferred over the years, and that's not, it's just reality. When you don't have the resource to do it, you have to, you have to do the most, the highest priorities, because other things get deferred. But in a perfect world, absolutely, then you have, you set those plans to fund those accounts, and then as the needs come, as provided you're able to continue to fund those, you should be set up. And that's, that's our goal, is to obviously have these accounts, these funds set up, and then you live within your means throughout the year.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Two accounts. It's kind of like cookbooks, okay? Pretend I didn't say that. All right.
Are you advocating for cookbooks?
So two budgets, the realistic one and the bucket list one?
Yeah, you know, just...
Can we say it?
It would be interesting just to see. And I think the biggie, the scary one, to me, is that the cost, you know, that, and, you know, apparatus, fire apparatuses, and then obviously patrol cars.
Patrol, yeah.
Those are, yeah. And I know that, and like, I think that Ken Smo Weber was alluding to, which is smart, to start saving towards inevitability, because we know that equipment has an expiration date. But the biggie is that how many miles of road do we have total?
95 miles, 8 miles.
Yeah, and a ton of it needs a lot of love.
Absolutely.
And we have 66 miles of a clutch and sewer system as well, which is a very expensive answer as well.
We can Band-Aid that and kick that ball down the, but in a perfect world, if it was, you know, like beautiful streets, what would that actually cost?
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to know.
Couple note in a mile.
So back to budget requests. We had an accounting manager helping with the workload for succession planning, and somebody else to hand off to if I ever do decide to retire. The cost for the website is $75,000. And the next one, legislative advocacy, $100,000. Ryan picked that one?
Yeah, that's one I put on there. In a perfect world, you know, I've worked with federal and state lobbyists previously, and they've been very helpful to advocate on the council's behalf on what your legislative desires are. But then also, they can advocate very, very well on the city's behalf for funding earmarks. They can very much pay for themselves. So it's something I've been wanting to do, but I wanted to wait to the budget process to see if we had the resources to be able to do it. Because it's about $40,000 for the federal advocacy, I think, and about $60,000 for state. So it's, it's not cheap, but what I've seen is it definitely pays for itself. And I know, we, want to do the next two as well? Or you want to?
I think the next one is something that will work out during the budget process. We try to look at where we are. I know we're adding, the comp study was a big, a big part of our budget. And I know we budgeted for part of it, but ongoing, it's going to be an ongoing expense. It was about $680,000 cost to the cities in the ongoing every year. So luckily, we did budget most of that, but that was going to be a huge hit. So as we go through the budget process, we can decide what is available to give to the capital asset replacement, capital project replacement, make some decisions. So you'll be hearing about that again when you receive the budget. And then the last one, comp study implementation, the 250 is the part that we did, but so out of the 680, 250 is not part of the budget. That is an extra, we're thinking of that as an extra expense, because we budgeted for everything else. But we're going to need to find another 250 going forward.
So why was that not budgeted?
We didn't have any idea what the comp study would do. So we just put a 5% increase at the time of budgeting, and then when the comp study came through.
In the comp study, and also how it was bargained, because we, we never know what the bargaining strategy is going to be. So yes, I know the MLEs haven't gone public yet, but they're hopefully going to go to the council next Tuesday. But, you know, we did different, you never know how bargaining is going to go. So you do your best estimate, which was about half a million, and then where we landed was closer to 700. By the time you implement the comp study, we were doing some different things for Law &amp; Fortune, which were a little bit more on the higher end for costs, but it was needed. So that's, those are those additional costs. All right.
For key accomplishments, 2324, secured over $6 million in grant funds. Did over $600,000 in first-time home loans, and over $200,000 in owner-occupied. Also completed, we made out of academy improvement project. Successfully submitted and adopted the 2022, 2030 housing element, and received over $1 million in loan payoffs. Some of the key initiatives that we're going to continue into 2425 are, we're still working on the Lincoln Commons apartment, about 65% done. The Lincoln Street senior apartment, who's been trying to get the financing squared away. We're going for another round of low-income housing tax credits that we hope will be successful for, and then that will start construction. Missionist Bronza is also on its way. We're hoping for a fall opening date. We've had several challenges that we've been going through and working with Low PUD, SCORE, Union Pacific Railroad, and we have some of our own drainage issues that we're working on. But it's in plan review right now, and we're waiting to get the final comments back, hopefully to get the permits. And we're hoping to start working on it this month. The Orbital Convention Center is moving right along. Right now, I think this stuff has been in architecture. They're doing some change requests, but it's moving forward. The neighborhood cleanup program, where Ron's staff is doing a great job at that, and we're spending a lot of funds, so that's good to see. We also had approval for the permanent local housing allocation, was a PLHA grant, where we're going to continue our CDVG owner-occupied rehabilitation program into that funding source, because the CDVG expires, and we already have an applicant for that. We also have been administering the county's Cal Home First-Time Home Buyer program. We've received about three applicants. So far, we've only funded one in that program. But we will be meeting and speaking with the Association of Realtors Board on the 25th to talk about that program. The county is paying us for that service. So that's something that we've actually taken on a few months ago. The Veterans Housing Development Corp, this is something you guys heard several times over the years. We're finally making some movement on the multifamily project at the old courtyard. They've been really focusing on the single-family owner-occupied rehabs, where we're putting people in single-family homes, but now they're shifting focus on that. So we're just finishing up the loan documents, and they are already requesting a first draw to do pre-development work, architectural work, including environmental work. Yes.
Do you have an update on the Montgomery Street project?
It's kind of in the backend, but it's, I think their plan, or you see, you recheck that they've been in there so long. But they still are going to do that project, but they have to pass a need-only, especially the funding stream. They have a new developer called Kingdom Development that's going to help them with that as well.
Is that lot currently transferred to them, or is it still a part of ours? So I'm going to message Ron, because it's looking pretty ugly.
Yes, we need to.
Thank you.
Yeah, the way that the VHTC projects work is that we don't actually transfer any of the property until they're ready to fight with the single families when they have ownership, because the Cal that can't loan to them, it has to loan directly to the borrower. So it has to be all at one. And with the multifamily projects, with Kingdom Development, it's pretty much the same way, because Cal beds, the Montgomery Streets are going to be owner-occupied, not multifamily. So it's going to have to go the same way as having the funding available.
Okay.
And then also, currently, I'm closing out eight grants, and so that should be completed by the end of May. I'll be bringing a public hearing to council to talk about the accomplishments of those. But that's a lot of work, but it'll free up a lot of time once they're closed out.
Question, who's the, you said you had a viable applicant for the permanent local PLHA?
Yeah.
Who would that be?
I don't have her name. It's a owner-occupy, I don't know if Kate has it. Actually, Caitlin. I think it's Karen, but...
So your focus is only on one? Is that usually the?
No, these are people, these are people that own their homes, that want to rehab.
Rehab their homes.
It's a great.
It's a good program.
It's a great program, but a lot of the challenges, I think we ran into, where there's a lot of renters that would not qualify, the owner-occupy, I mean, it's a fantastic program. We pushed it out, tried to get more participation in it, and it's a...
Yeah, so with the CDVG, we're just completing five rehabs. But that's the first one we received for the PLHA funding, because we're, we can't start any new projects until we have new systems. So it's open for anybody that wants to try. We just won't receive whatever.
That's a shame.
We'll do another marketing thing on our Facebook. It was really broadened a lot. The last time we did it, we were doing a month, so we closed out the CDVG grants, because there are a lot of work right now to do those.
Without getting too deep into this, the veterans project on the old, on the old yard versus the Montgomery Street, obviously visually, it'd have been nice to see that happen first on Montgomery Street, because they have a vacant lot with weeds growing in it, you know. But there's, so within the veterans administration, their prioritization, was that in part because it's a larger project? You know, in other words, why the one versus the other? I mean, from a city standpoint, I would have loved to see that Montgomery Street built out.
It's a lot more difficult to do, because they're owner-occupied, so you have to find buyers for each of the ones, but also their townhomes. It would be best to be able to build them all at the same time, but the financing and the... but the financing and the Cal bet they're not able to do yet. So they have to find about three buyers and fight at one time before they can get the commitment to buy them. And so it just is a lot more moving parts to do it. Plus, they needed to find a new developer for it. And they did find Kingdom Development that's going to be assisting them with the Mitchell Avenue one as well as the Montgomery one. But the, with all the funding that we're going to be able to get with the Mitchell one, that's moving a lot quicker because there's other funding that's already going to be lined up for that. And we also, the city provided a one-point-seven-five-million-dollar loan for that project a couple of years ago. And so they'll have money to start the pre-development work on that either. So it's just a lot more difficult of a project.
So with this new Kingdom, is there more hope then? They'll be more aggressive with finding that? And the interest rates, I'm sure that probably plays into it as well.
It does play into it. And I'm not sure, I will ask those questions again. This kind of, we've been just focusing on trying to get this one, but also...
It's just starting to look sad because the sign is starting to fade and, you know, all...
It's a challenge because people don't want to buy something they can't see.
Yeah.
So that's partly the issue. So once we get one built, we find a couple buyers, get one built, then for the other two, it'll hopefully drop some a lot more interest. But the other really different projects.
Right, and the clientele, they're not, they're not savvy in real estate, so it's really hard for them to also to visualize what it's going to be. And so it's a lot more difficult for them to sell than even a single family. So in new initiatives for twenty-four, twenty-five, they're really not new. They continue grant funds, fire, rehabs, and public services. And we have some new visitor coming out in the next few months. Also for infrastructure, which includes public facility improvements and fire threat purchases. I think we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then also, financially feasible, because we're grant-funded, we don't have a lot of funds to look for. Software's so expensive. But one of the things that would, would be nice to have is a new loan portfolio management system because ours really is struggles. We struggle to make it work for us. But, I mean, it is working for us, so it's not unusable, but it's not fun.
So it's antiquated?
Yes.
We know what that looks like.
And then new budget requests. Again, because we're grant-funded, we don't have a lot of requests for you. But one of the main ones is that I do often find myself working on projects that are not necessarily covered by grants, either for other departments or for administration. And it was just a request to possibly fund part of my salary out of the general fund for those instances.
It is critical. We don't want to get... There's audits on a regular basis. We want to make sure that we're doing every... Doting our eyes, crossing our Gs and making sure I... Any of the great jobs is going to allocate everything you possibly can towards the grants, but there are times when it's just not feasible, and then the restrictions are getting harder.
I've had to go... In our last monitoring, we had a few things where I've had to change processes to show that we're actually working on the, you know? And so it's getting harder and harder to say, oh, yeah. So anyway, that's what that's for.
Good question. I'll come to Ron. Phil and Portman say, have opened thirteen hundred and seventy spaces in the past year.
I don't think he would like that.
What's that? Want to skip? Let me, let's skip.
Is he coming?
I'm going to...
I just had a meeting with him, so I don't know if some... He came up or what, but...
I'm in agreement with Chrissy. Can we jump ahead?
Yes.
I know how much Ron cares about his reports.
Yes.
Go to Pat.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Back to delayed response. New budget request, budget forty percent of your salary to general so that you're sustainable. Okay.
And that's worst case. Again, we're going to, she's in the budget, allocate as much as she possibly can.
As much as, but in the event, then?
Yeah, because also, you know, I'm far behind in what they allocate towards like general administration costs or activity delivery costs. And so even as salaries are raising, it hasn't, it has been the same for as long as I've been here. For instance, the home program for a million dollars, you get twenty-five thousand dollars in general admin to for three years. You'll also get activity delivery, but that's... General admin is the money that you have more freedom to for the other things that aren't... Activity delivery has to be address-specific. So it has to be on a project with an address. Where general fund is more like overhead and, you know, city council meetings and things like that. So that's just, that has an increase in the entire time we've been here. And I complain about it, but, you know.
Okay.
We'll be here shortly.
We'll go back to them.
So it'll make you feel better? Okay.
For example, the PLHA program only allows five percent. So Amy has a lot of work that she has to do that's not address-specific. So then where does all that money go?
Right. Okay, thanks for the explanation.
So the community development department, last year, we had, we adopted the twenty-two building code. We adopted some ordinances. We adopted the Skip and Bolt program, which I'm happy to say that contractor developers are participating in. And we have this development right over here that's expected to get started. I got an email about that yesterday. The market rate housing, the luxury apartments that we've been expecting is moving forward. So it looks like that is turning out to be a good thing. We adopted the housing element, which is sort of in the camp of both housing and community development planning is on the part of that. And we adopted a new city logo.
Could you just refresh Skip and Bolt afternoon?
Yeah, the Skip and Bolt program are, those are two different programs run by two different quasi-government agencies that we are part... We have a JPA with both of them. And they allow for developers to have access to pooled bonds. So these are bonds that would be somewhere between like five-hundred-thousand to maybe five-million dollars. And they will help a developer pay for their infrastructure and for their fees, impact fees, why not?
I just needed a refresh of that.
We loaded them.
Right, I just needed a refresh on the acronyms.
No, the acronyms. I get in the weeds for all of them.
I get a lot of acronyms.
Right, so... Okay, so the key initiatives for twenty-four, twenty-five is to continue building the team. So I'm still trying to build the team as, as a team, but then also fill positions that are, that are vacant right now. Want to increase collaboration amongst the team and amongst the departments, which I feel we have a really good foundation for already. And then elevating customer service. I feel like that's also moving along. We had that nice compliment from Gallagher's office. But there's still, customer service is a, it's a big thing for you guys, I know, and it's a big thing for me, too. So, so we're still improving on that.
Just on the customer service piece, you put in your office up front and all of that. It's just been very positive, refreshing. Yeah, it's a good move.
It was, and we'll take credit for that, but it was a good move.
Periodically, I would get people coming over to my office and grumble, 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 and that's all gone away.
Nice.
Completely evaporated, so, yeah, awesome.
That's great.
Thank you.
And we'll give credit to Ryan for that. Okay, so we're going to continue to improve the relationships that we have between the city and the community. And again, this is through the customer service, through education, like the Civic One-on-One program, and then through outreach. And I've been attending a lot of meetings with the different organizations and whatnot and making some connections. And I feel like that's, we're getting some good traction here. We're doing, we're going to be doing the community development remodel, so the upfront area, we're trying to figure out a way. Still working with the architect on the right flow. So when people come in, that there's a, that there's a good counter space for them to work with, the person that they need to work with. But then they know exactly where they're supposed to go, who to greet them and all that. And then we're going to continue to pursue residential and commercial development. And then the south side revitalization plan and implementation. So we're looking forward to that coming up.
Do we have a date on when they're going to bring, bring forth?
I do have the report. It came back actually last week. And I wanted to digest it and then sit down and talk to you about it.
Okay.
You just got, you just got it.
I just got it. I started reading it on Saturday. Yeah, really literally just got it at the end of last week.
Great news.
Yeah.
Right, I look forward to the conversation.
It's long.
Does it seem attainable?
I don't even know yet. I mean, so far, I'm reading it, the whole, it's, there's like ten pages of preamble. Okay, so the... Oh, all right. Continuing with the key initiatives, we have the completing the circulation element update. Continuing to pursue microgrids and energy resiliency. The Gateway Pre-Development Project. Working with, working with the GSCA for the broadband grant. That, that still is, we've already got, it looks like they submitted the application for all thirty-five cities. And just the other day, they feel pretty positive that we have a good chance of getting that.
Okay.
Marketing the city for development, civic pride and tourism. And then updates to the Orville Municipal Code that reflect current position for development. Okay, continuing, all right, so new initiatives now. So one of the goals I've talked with Amy about this is to establish Orville as a hub for alternative energy. We have a lot of low-hanging fruit with, with businesses that are already here that have been courting us. And so now I'm starting to look at them as, like, why not create a cluster and create them as things? So as you would, like you would have an auto mall, why not create like an alternative energy hub mall? So we have, we have three or four biomass companies that have, that have come to us. We have potential for a battery manufacturer to come and some other sort of exciting things that I'm hoping will all come together. We're updating the municipal code. Why did I say that one? Oh, no, the, when we, when you adopt the general plan housing element, often it puts our municipal code out of compliance with our, with the, with what we've adopted. So we have to go through this year and make sure that our municipal code meets what our general plan is. We're working on the EnerGov system for the, that's part of the Tyler program, Tyler suite of web-based programs. And then the, also the web-based program that you asked me about just the other day, the, that will help residents and business owners puzzle out their projects before they even come to City Hall.
Pat?
Yes?
The biomass businesses, you got it before the council. And did we have some pushback? Like, I know Councilman Weber had mentioned that the quantity of land this would tie up. Am I correct?
I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
The biomass, the concentration, and I think it was you that, that said, that brought up the quantity of land that this would take up.
Yeah, I was saying, I was noting that I felt like there was adequate land that we could use and leverage and create. And Pat, I've had extensive conversations on this about creating a green energy production hub to try to attract more green energy producers, biomass or whatnot. Because where industry pops up and then they're attracted, if you were to look at kind of like the Silicon Valley model of the early sixties, when the microprocessor started developing down there, it exploded. And then look what happened with that area. If we could, if we could design and if we could... What he's suggesting we do is basically attract ourselves as a green energy production hub or city. We embrace that technology, and then we attract all those industry that would come here and create, not only would we be a place that produces green energy, but we would produce all those jobs that come with it. So, so, and I think we have adequate land. But you know what? We're uniquely poised with land, power and water because with all the mills that we've had around here, we got a huge advantage over other cities in our area in that we have a gigantic amount of power and water that run to these that already, there's a lot of structure that runs to them, infrastructure. So we got a huge advantage to... So Pat's, in my, in my opinion, dead on the money in what he's supposed to be doing. This, this can help usher in the next generations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
See that it was also, there's a benefit to the, to the companies coming together into the same location because then you have jobs that are sort of similar to each other, and there's conversation and collaboration between them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so continuing with initiatives, promoting business development in the downtown area, tracking food providers. This is not something I really talked about, but something I want to do to, like grocery stores and that type of thing, to the north Orville area, which doesn't, which is not serviced by a grocery store, but enough restaurants. Pursue a trade school opportunities. This is something that I, is not my, my, I was not the impetus of this, but I am something that I'm working on. And we have some conversations going with Butte College and some of the local manufacturers about what we, a program that would be able to help them grow and provide work or a trained workforce for them. So I talked about this only a little bit with everybody, but it, but I'm interested in the, in the idea about us creating a vernal pool mitigation bank. Because developers, when they come in, especially if we were to annex this site over here, there's, there's a lot of vernal pools. It's very difficult for them, and they, it costs, it's very costly for them to mitigate. But if we were to somehow do a mitigation bank ourselves, and then we could sell them that back at our costs, something like that. This is concept, so it's just something that I'm working on, but I'm not, I'm not going full head-on to it. And then developing the streamlined process for permitting of the alternative energy businesses that are coming. So the new budget requests, they put in here fifty thousand dollars for economic development, trade shows and marketing. Yes, sir.
I'm all over that. I want, I want you and your team to have the swag, the booth, the whatever you need behind you, be at these shows. I bet, I'm super down with this.
I do, too, but we'll see what happens. Get all the money. And so for marketing implemented, or, you know, retaining or hiring and retaining a, a marketing consultant, we put down two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for that effort. And then some office furniture for staff, it's ten thousand dollars.
Now, is this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand included in the discussions that we, like this morning, that we had with the...
That's just looking for, we're going to hire...
But that would be part of that, is that what you...
It is that, right, it is that.
And then, and actually, not to, not to circle all the way back, but Ruth was talking about seventy-five thousand dollars for a website. And we had a discussion this morning about the website. So that would kind of satisfy those needs as well.
I figured that we'd wait and see how that sort of, how that unfolds. And, right, that it, most likely that'll put some money back into the general fund if his comments were correct this morning.
We just had a fairly robust conversation about that this morning. Look like there, look like that's going to be an element at least, right?
I like her number better because it gets us a better website, but might work.
I mean, the city needs a new, upgraded website. So if there's some sort of, obviously we do that, and if the marketing and, you know, I can, it'll, it'll, we'll certainly dovetail that in some shape.
Right, yeah. These things all sort of, this whole page, this is all kind of in the same bucket, pretty much.
And I'll, let me, I should have said this again. Some of these figures, too, are, you know, they're educated guesses at this point in time, too. But we wanted to keep some figures out there so you can get something substantive.
All the other things that I've listed that I'm working on this year, I don't really see them costing any money, you know, at this point. And I think that they're just things to do, and they're attracting businesses, making connections. I don't really see them costing anything. It's just my time.
Well, if I might add, if I could just say from my personal perspective, watching you move and navigate through all the different meetings that I, I know you attend, and making the meaningful connections and networking and looking, because you're, you're busy, you're very busy looking for the opportunity, and I love that because that's what I do. I constantly scan, looking for opportunity. And I'm watching you do that, and I couldn't be more pleased with the work you're doing as our department head, community development. I'm pleased with all of you. I mean, a very, but in this particular thing, I think you're taking the vision of what we, what we kind of, like this council said, hey, this is where I want you to go. And not only are you doing it, but you take the ball and you're like running. And so that's, that's very good.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, yeah, appreciate that.
Really quick, do you want to take a pause and grab some lunch and then come back and continue the conversation? Do you want to push forward?
My stomach's growling.
Should we take ten, catch up to them, then come back and then we'll kick it? Fire?
Okay.
That's all right. We're unmuted. Unmuted? All right, we're live.
All right.
We've funded new trailers, new foot trailers with new, new state of the art equipment for rescuers. We redesigned some trailers in the past. There've been, there's like three different trailers, wave runners and Zodiac boats and different things. So we're trying to consolidate all of it on the one trailer and then get everything so when we respond, Al will have everything with us, because they all do different things in the field with looking for victims or body patients or body recovery or what have you. We've also added a certified UAS pilot. City apparatus, which is throughout the state, obviously it's a program that's taken over and they're, they're kind of spread out through the county and states. But the city of Orgo actually had a UAS pilot and a drone on it. Here's the drone, keeps it on the engine with them. And that gives us huge advantages out in the field where we can kind of get an overhead perspective of an incident before just sending firefighters in. And also it's a great tool for finding victims on rivers with the camera system on it. Being able to locate them before we send rescuers in the water and firm up a plan and know our challenges before we get there. But also it helps. But also, it helps a lot with pre-planning for the city. So as everybody knows, there's a lot of multi-story apartment complexes in Orville. We take the drone out and we'll fly over and we'll take pictures. And we pre-plan every business throughout the city, county-wise as well. But we can really get an overhead perspective, we take those pictures from the drones and find hazards, you know, propane tanks, and fuel tanks, and all these little things. We can pre-plan for those, it's just a tool that also helps us prevent and be knowledgeable before we get there.
How many drones do you guys utilize?
Throughout the county? Well, the air cap program has two or three, and then there's, I want to say they have a four that are strategically placed throughout the county. The city just happens to be one, we were fortunate, we had a guy that was interested in it. Kind of have to have some kind of interest in it to, if you want to pursue it. But Bill Robinson, he came over and contracted, he's a previous city guy as well, but he's really good, he's handy. But it's great, like I said, he's been requested in since, we have medical out in the Orville wildlife area, and we couldn't find a deer hunter. We fell out of a tree stand, wherever we get drones out to help find them and locate them.
Thank you.
Chris, I'd like to see how that works. Is there any way we can do a one-on-one with council members that are interested in doing a ride-along?
Great idea.
Yeah.
I'd be interested.
Yeah, absolutely, he carries it low case, he gets out, and he'll open up. The city self-funds a lot of the equipment that he's carrying, and takes the drone out and goes through his protocol, picks it up, flies it, hits us. I like it a lot. We have also updated the aerial ladder truck program, which desperately was needed. The truck program before the transition was pretty well-rounded and a good program, but it needed to be updated and really integrated with the cooperative agreements with Gridley. And the truck that we're looking at purchasing is pretty much the exact same truck that Gridley ordered as well, so there'll be some contingency. So what we did is we put a Fire Strut program, a New County Truck Program, we merged on the, and kind of made two different modules. And it's been a huge workload to really get that up in out in the field and implement it as a procedure for everyone to be consistent with the truck, with the truck. This man vehicle, this is, this man vehicle, I'm here with a picture of it, it's a 22 F-250 diesel, great, great truck. I know that happens to be mine, but it's fully outfitted with multiple radios, it's got a truck bolt in the back, you can open up and it's kind of really set up to command large, heavy-staying incidents. So it's a huge benefit to the city, and we've upgraded all three command vehicles at the time of 90, Matt Bertrand's, 9B, Isaac Reese's, and mine. All three have been upgraded over the last several years and kind of wrapped that project up. So everything's new and updated and loaded, and really sets our guys up for success to go out in the field and command pretty complex incidents.
Chris, a good question on communications equipment. So I notice it's getting more and more difficult to hear that conversation, you know, like with the scanner.
Oh, encryption? You're talking about encryption?
Yeah, so where's that side of CalFire as they move? One of the things I appreciated about being able to monitor that from a public, this is just my own personal, when I had, when I was living on property, you know, up on the hill. And during fire season, we, you know, it was like 24/7, and that really was a huge help. So is CalFire going to continue to move toward that or do it?
I haven't heard anything official. I think we're politically people, I believe, because it's exactly what you said, it gives, you know, the community an opportunity to hear what, what we're saying and what we're seeing in.
Oh, yeah, just pre-planning and, because I've evacuated multiple times from multiple property over the years, and I knew when I needed to leave. I mean, I knew ahead before I actually got the official word, because we're listening to the guys as they're communicating about the fire and its progress, and it was a huge, huge help. Yeah.
If, if fire went encrypted, it would probably only be on the main dispatch frequency, I don't see it in the crispy states. CalFire buys almost every frequency in the state, there's a ton of them, so I think it'd be too expensive for Cal. There's hundreds and hundreds of frequencies that CalFire owns and encrypt them all with. So I guess maybe long wait, long tunnel road, but it's not intentional. Westside Public Safety Facility planning. As Pat mentioned earlier, the development throughout the city continues to grow, and I think it's important for us to be prepared for that growth and being able to handle it and maintain, you know, a level of consistency with response. And not increasing response times, but decreasing response times. The good thing about the Westside Public Safety Facility, the planning is meeting the general plan for the city and reducing response times, particularly to the west side of town where the Melrose are in place. So not necessarily asking for money right now, it's just letting you know that we're preparing for that, there's funds in there, or need to be funded. But there's some good initiation funds to really get the ball rolling and open the conversation and figure out where do we want to put a station, where do we want to, we want to build one, we want to purchase one. You know, what do we want to do, where do we want to be, and just having a conversation, a plan moving forward as the city grows. They're continuing to develop out here, and it takes over seven minutes right now to respond from the downtown fire station to really the airport area in general. And the city's general plan written down, it says, "Fire Department travel plan should place first to at scene within five minutes." So that's kind of where we try to be, and that's how we plan moving forward. So we couldn't just grab any spot for a fire station, it's got to meet certain requirements to meet the general plan, right? So 90% coverage of the city in five minutes or less, so we want to cover 90% of what the fire stations or public safety facilities are, increasing response times, and call the city by.
And 100% for that. The west side. We don't have any other.
Yeah, there's resources in that fund, and the idea is to try to at least, Chief and I had some discussions and actually, Chief Grodin and I were talking yesterday. So we, I think, I need to get a little bit more educated on the options that are out in this area, but ultimately, there's resources there. It's time to at least start to, to the point, if we get to a point where we're shovel-ready, then Amy can come in and say today, hopefully, get grand money to build the infrastructure for the actual building. So we've had conversations, and if we can do some of this work this fiscal year, it could set us up nicely for the following fiscal year for actual construction or infill work if we have a building that's out here that is suitable for it, so.
I would like to be involved in that conversation, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So just to set the record straight, that was the sole interim purpose of accruing the monies and setting them aside in the funding. And Bill knows how long that money continues to grow, I mean, and for this specific facility.
It missed parts that council person was to build the building and to fund this now.
Yeah.
So there's two actual parts of.
Okay.
Just about. Do we know how, do we know how much is in that ballpark?
Eight hundred thousand, but we are assessing 60,000 a year each, so 120,000 a year goes.
Okay, and dividing the both, but, thank you.
Just to kind of add a perspective of revenue it could generate, it's been a while since I ran the numbers. Within the current Melrose boundaries, I think the amount of money that comes in, right, is depending if there's a home built or not built. And if there's a home built, it's less, if not. So we want to look to see if we were to develop a home, if there was a house on every single lot within the Melrose, how much money would that generate? It's roughly about 100, 1.8 million, I think, is the total build-out, which still isn't enough to fully staff our police and fire.
That was going to be my question, like how many, you know, residential build-outs do you need for sustainable model for your annual budget?
Well, I think it's a good, it's a good starting point there, but I think as the city continues to grow and develop, particularly out in this area, it'd probably be a good idea to corporate.
Put the infrastructure first.
Yeah, so.
And of course, with the commercial, the commercial area is commanding as well, I mean, obviously, they're going to pay into that, so it's not just residential.
And as we see homes built out here, hopefully, we can see other things, you know, come along with that as well.
So it's advantageous for the city to continue that dialogue to annex that part of the county into the city.
I just really wanted council to know that ensuring community safety on the west side of town is important to us, it's important to all of us. Brian has a strong interest in it, I know Bill does, we all work in this union. But it's really firming up, I know I'll talk about it if we're moving forward. But it's getting to see firefighter capabilities, that's always something on my mind, giving the health folks the tools that are necessary to be safe and make it home to their families, and give them good reliable equipment. And not really just ask for money, but plan for it, plan for it ahead, you know, so we're not, you know, trying to play catch-up all the time. This is a big one, moving forward into 24, 25, it's CalFire implementation of the 66-hour work week. We're looking at eventually November of 24. So what that is, is currently right now, CalFire MOU agreement, if firefighters, it's on the ground, we're getting 72-hour work week, three on, four off. That's how they're pumping, hourly, 72 hours a week. State has recognized that we're overworking our guys, and we're not paying them enough. So it's a reduction in the amount of hours that they work a week or a month, regardless, both 66 hours in a week, it's going to get reduced from 72 to 66 hours a week. We don't know exactly how that's going to look. The director doesn't even know what CalFire thinks. It's something that CalFire is passionate about, for firefighters to reduce their work week, but also not lose pay. So, but our respect for Orville is it creates additional positions, it's something I don't have control over. It's in the 22 MOU and legislation agreed to it, and it's in play, it's going to happen, I don't know exactly when, there's talks about November of 24. It adds three positions to the contract, and it's statewide. U County is going to see it, everybody's in CalFire, it's three positions, one fire captain, two firefighter duty. And that adds three additional positions, which reduces the amount of hours our firefighters are working. So the cost, the cost, it's going to be 500,000, right?
Say a million, yeah.
So I ran some rough numbers, and with the new mechanic, with the new mechanic, would be 5.2 in year three for the city, and some change. It was originally agreed upon at 5 million, a little over 5 million. So that's 213,000 for that, and then the six-hour work week, with the three additional firefighters, bring it to a total with the mechanic, 5.724 for that, that year. It's important to remember, too, that there have been increases, and since the contract was signed, and we've been able to kind of absorb those increases just because of the level of steps that the Orville firefighters came over at. And we haven't really seen that that's included in there. There's been increases for dispatchers and firefighters across the board, but like I said, luckily, we were able to absorb that in the original contract cost, but eventually, it's going to catch up. Those guys get higher steps and move on. Any questions on this issue at all?
To me, that works out about, obviously, 66 hours, it's a six-hour a week reduction, so about one day a month, one day every, every four weeks, they're getting an extra day off.
And this would be no reduction in pay, though, right?
This is still, I think, an hour more than what we were originally before we segued over to CalFire.
Orville Fire with the 56-hour.
56, so it's still, still significant.
The goal is to get to 56. Lose, CalFire loses firefighters all the time, both government, because they're making the same or more in a lot of cases, working, working less. For CalFire to be competitive, but truly recognize that we are overworking our guys, trying to do too much with not enough people. We need to add people, and it's going to take years and years to get to 56, I'm guessing five and seven, but I don't know. But this is a plan to keep there, so instead of hiring 5,000 people throughout the state at once, we'll hire X amount of employees for the 56, and slowly get to that 56.
So is there, so we're talking about a five-year plan, then I think we need to be thinking about that.
Absolutely.
Certainly for budgetary reasons, because, you know, that'll be just thrust upon us. So that's, because that's a big calculation.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially 56-hour, that's, that's a big, that's another, yeah, maybe five, I mean, I don't know what the, just kind of roughening in my head, rounding another four or five staff members to get to 56. Yeah.
About 56, you're about half of it, so.
Well, we weren't, we weren't aware of that when we had the discussions, and like, yes, maybe you were.
Well, I think it was relatively, it's something CalFire was working on for, for a long time, you know, the unions has really voiced their, their feelings on working too much and losing people to turnover. So it's something that, you know, that we're trying to be responsible for. I don't know what's going to happen, state's budget is not in that shape, but the director of CalFire very, very set, looking for correction. True, it's the both and two, so I wouldn't be surprised if it does, does happen in the future, but that's kind of what we're looking at now.
We'll probably find out in May, they revise.
They revise.
So more of our.
A whole year or just from November to June?
Fiscal year.
A whole year?
So it'll be retroactive back?
No.
No, it's just, he was just giving you an annual cost.
Oh, okay, all right, I was going to say, whoa.
Full year, worst-case scenario, you pop step, those are the rough numbers, 5.7.
So more of our Measure You money, and I'll wait till. More of our revenue, more of our Measure You money going into.
Exactly, look for that.
But just to add to that conversation.
Fire and.
Sorry.
That's the only way we can.
And that's the only way we can sustain it, huh? So somebody's, somebody's going to be cut.
But just to add to the conversation, I think it's worth noting that just as we've had to increase the salaries for PD, if we were still OFD with a 56-hour work week, right? You know, we, we would have had to have done some significant increases there, so it's relative to some level, I would say.
Yeah, it is, and there's, there's a unique difference, and the chief and I have been talking, I think our goal is July, I believe we're going to come back to the council with just a, just a two-year look back over, obviously, the contract with, with CalFire for fire services. Obviously, we're going into the last year of the contract, so we want to give the council an update as much as we can and compare things, as, as much as you can, you know, apples to oranges.
Right.
You're absolutely right, if we were still Orville Fire, costs absolutely bill up, there's no question, it's still, you still have to compete for the same firefighting crew. Yep, no, there's no doubt.
And this is three of staff teams, two.
It's a big difference, yeah.
Two, three, three, four, so we have three, three on the gym and two guys on the truck, now within the contract, it's three and three. There is the same amount of people, it's just the work week, the 72 hours versus the 56, we're able to take the same amount of employees, have more firefighters on a day, but really the same cost, similar cost, I should say. But yeah, it, the contract did add a sixth firefighter. Years ago, I talked a lot about stats and the number of calls, and I think the Orville City Station 91 ran close to 8,500 calls. That's a lot of calls. So to do my ability, how are we going to reduce the calls? You can't keep people from calling 911, but there's a lot of things we could look at, you know, like priority dispatching. Why are we sending a fire engine to a clinic where there's a doctor to take care of a patient that has a cardiac problem? Well, it's Orville Hospital's policy, that if it's not a ER, it's detached clinic, where if it's a doctor, they don't have the tools necessary, they call 911, but when you call 911, you get an ambulance to transport, you get a fire engine. So I think it's time that we evaluate some of the calls we go to. That doesn't mean we're not going to go to medicals, it just means maybe we don't send a fire engine to a doctor's office. Maybe we could send an ambulance, and if they need us, then they could request us. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't respond to.
I've fallen and I can't get up.
Right, yeah, all those calls would remain the same, but it's a level of training, so you have MTS and paramedics getting a patient rundown from a doctor, it's crazy. But they need to go to the hospital to get a proper care, it's just how do we, what do we need to say to really medicate? It's just how do we, what do we need to say to really meditate it? Now, if it's a CPR call or something like that, then yeah, definitely we need to send fire engines and help out. You know, help out, make sure we provide a better service. But really looking at some of the addresses and some other things that we could do. That's something that we've been working on, that there's a lot of research to do behind the scenes before we just stop some fire. So we'll make sure we cover all our bases. One of the most important things that you do get within the contract is the EMD dispatchers. They're, they're essentially medically trained fire dispatchers. So screening a lot of those call types and ask the right questions to determine what do we really need to send a base. Instead of just calling 911 and we just send, send the world and kind of screening some of that, that information out before we just send it in. But I'll be counsel surprised at that, because you guys are in the loop when we start adjusting our calls. The area ladder truck, this is, it's been specced and designed in for orgo. It's kind of hard to see, but this is essentially what it'll look like. It's a hundred and seven foot ladder. So it'll reach up to five stories, maybe a little bit more. It'll reach the top of every building in the city. Looking forward, if the city grows, I don't know. But in the meantime, but we've also really taken into consideration the unique photography through, throughout the city and some of the rolling hills and where a lot of these developers are really wanting to put these apartment buildings. Can be challenging sometimes to get to the Lincoln Street apartments are a perfect example. You know, the property line sits way down low and here's Lincoln right up here. Well, our ladder trucks 42 feet long, we, we need to make sure we can get it in there. So this will allow us, we designed it, you know, by request, because I know one called damage. But also we need to be a little bit flexible for developers as they come in. Maybe we can offer a little bit, we could be a little bit less lenient on code because our truck is, is capable to get into some of these tough to reach areas without having damage.
Have we considered asking the county to contribute to the cost of this since why are we, the city providing it for all of this part of the county?
City for the city.
Yeah, but it's also, it's undoubtedly the first to in and feather falls in the whole country. And also county facilities that would require a police office. It seems like they should have some contribution to the, to the initial purchase. I think it's, they'll be resistant to the conversation for sure. I mean, that's $1.8 million.
I think we're, we've met a lot on, on how we're going to fund it. And I'm not asking for the money today, but it's something that we need to replace. You know, our 22, 23 year old ladder has broke down now. It's back, going back to Sacramento with, with issues. And we just spent a lot of money to get, to get staffing service and it's constantly, constantly down. I think because of, of age and running calls, it's just unfortunately it's not able to keep up with the.
It's a great point, Bill.
But we're looking at grant funding and I'm sure that'll come up later, some other options. But it's something that we do need to plan for. It's something the city does need. We can't reach with ladder anything.
Without getting too deep into the weeds in that conversation and just bringing up the tribal entities and what grant funding. I wonder if there is any kind of partnership possibilities there, you know?
I think a lot of the Indian gaming money is kind of going away.
It's all wrong.
Is it?
The state kept it. You didn't even get to the county. They kept.
Wow.
Yeah.
There are tribes that are allowed to apply for CDBG funds as well as local jurisdictions that have an additional pot. But I've not researched it to see how they could apply for something that we're also planning for. But that's something that we can look into. I can ask a question. But.
Apply on her behalf, maybe.
We'll talk later about what we're, about this, what we're thinking. So I'm not sure that that's really necessary.
It's important for us to exhaust every avenue of funding before we go on, I think the general funding. But it's something to plan for and we're just researching some different avenues to help pay that.
Is there any market, Chris, for the old ones to sell them?
If I was to throw a number out, I'd say on the high end, ours would maybe be worth 10,000.
You can sell that thing for 10 grand.
I don't think.
Got a buyer.
You might see, you might see me driving around. Get on your roof service.
Oh, nevermind.
Real, real quick, this time check and.
Yes.
I just have to leave it too. So I want to make sure.
Absolutely.
We get through it and have time for your input, so.
Code enforcement and police.
We're going to roll off.
If you can facilitate, have a position or lighter to protect him out there for. But there's a lot of flights that go over airport, a lot. It's important for us to be ready for that. New initiatives in the board. Westside Public Safety Facility is going to be a continuous plan.
Yes, yes, yes.
It needs to be developed. You know, we're just going to be able to open one day. So I think we really thin down where we want it, where it needs to be, where it's meeting the city's general plan. And then implement the strategic plan to get people into the facility and actually staffing it. Design, communication. The primary, I put this map up right here. This is a general location of the central fire station. This gives you an idea of a five minute response in it. How far that could, that's within the general plan, five minutes or less. But it also bumps into, there's an overlap between the station downtown. So we've overlapped those three five minute clock or if we just refuse to. Over simple things down in the two fire, that I need to do like. All of these dots are calls to the service. So you can kind of see where the, where the calls are. They're downtown. But after we develop, we start to pick up.
Row down.
There's a lot of. Include the county calls.
Is that row dominant, then?
So.
I vote yes.
But this is kind of a general area where I just thought of anywhere a station would, would kind of meet the, the general plan. Is it, this happens to be around the orgo. New budget request. Area ladder truck, 1.86. And that's good and felt roughly May because the, the cost of things go up every fiscal year. It fluctuates between, I think, one and four percent is what I said. So up till May, it's 1.86 for ladder truck. But we're looking for avenues and ways to be able to incentivize.
Just really quick, Amy's been really, really working hard and trying to find funding sources. So she's actually been random. It's July?
It's the CDBG grant that is going to be the 2024, that's going to open up in July. The no further expansion and we'll apply in September. But originally we had asked to apply for first time home buyer funds and to, to fund cattle and that didn't go through. So we're going to have to go through the whole process again because it's been so long. But my recommendation really is going to be, you've heard that the amount is going to be 3.6 million per jurisdiction and six or three applications. So my suggestion is maybe we apply for the fire truck since we already have a basic complete application. We'll be able to be first come, first served, like quickly get one in there. And then also because it's not just a fire truck, it's fire equipment. I think I can do the top four things in that application and get those approved. So there is some additional work because we have to go through the whole procurement process for all of it. But that's, I've talked to our state rep and he says that that's something.
Appropriate.
And then I was thinking, I mean, I just want to have deciding today about public service. We could do two maybe. And then I would do a program income only application because we have accumulated about 400,000 for our first time home buyer. In the actual application. So these are just thoughts that I've been thinking about to try to get the most for our.
Thanks for the bet.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ladder truck, apparatus shoreline power that as we get new equipment in, it's important to plug, plug the apparatus in to triple charge the batteries and keep the blocks warm. You know, it's one o'clock in the morning on December and there's a call that's jumping out, firing up and it's going, right? So it causes a little bit of horn to the playback. The shoreline keeps the blocks and motors warm. And also everything switching from gas to electric. So a lot of the tools that we're carrying on engines, to be able to plug into the engine where they're constantly charging them. And in that way, when they go out to ventures, you know, they have fully charged batteries and ready to go. That's 11,790. Rescue support response vehicle that's down here in the corner. It's really like a construction truck, but right now we're down a vehicle. I think it was an Explorer. We lost, we were surplusing the, an older 2005 F-150 and an Explorer. Which is old and not good anymore. So we're down a vehicle. We have one material. This would be dedicated to rescue. It carries rescue equipment on it, really has a similar vehicle as well. And that would be dedicated to be pulling the water rescue equipment around. Right now I've seen guys use personal vehicles and. Some vehicles, it's not, you know, super crucial, but it's something that we definitely need to start working towards to get something that's dedicated to pull the rescue equipment around. Power compressor, breathing air compressor, that's this right here. The firefighters have breathing air packs on the backs to breathe, breathe plenty of air in a smoky environment or hazard environment, that fills bottles back up. Something that, that machine is current, it's 2095, working like a lot of our other, most of our equipment. Hard to break down and parts are becoming hard to get. So planning ahead to have something to replace that. If it goes out, we can't provide some video bottle, can't sell it, can't fill our SDB bottles. Travel around to some of the county stations. It's something that we need to work forward accordingly. Only for the 66, 500,000. And then engineering and design work for Westside Public Safety Facility. Kind of helping here, but we need to go through the designing process to see.
And there's ones for that available, so that's.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the council, staff members, citizens. Key accomplishments for last year. We implemented our ALPR camera network, which has been crucial to several high profile cases. It's a great tool. We're going to talk about that a little bit more in a little bit. We implemented our community navigator program, which has honestly really started to gain a lot of momentum and connecting our displaced transient population with resources within the community to get people off the streets. So they are not causing problems for businesses and just it really helped their lives. We upgraded our department's social media presence. Kelly Riley has been an absolute blessing for the department. She's really vamped our Facebook page, getting our message out, telling our story, really. Kelly's been great, so I consider that a major accomplishment. We do have new patrol vehicles, which we've outfitted with forward facing cameras and cameras that cover the, the part of the vehicle where the detained person sits. And pointing to assistant chief. All right. Hope it's not a key mistake next year. And also, ladies and gentlemen, I will share with you that 2324, I didn't want to put a bunch of numbers up there. But I will say that our department went through a lot and we had different periods where due to people being hurt or other things. We had officers working a lot of hours, overtime. And I think what you have now is a, is a really battle tested group of officers dedicated to protecting the city. So I did want to share you of that. So new initiatives, obviously we want to keep, continue our efforts to increase staffing. That's, that's always our goal. We want to expand our technology network, specifically more ALPR cameras and also look at developing a regular, what you would call normal surveillance camera network within the city. Basically, we want to use as much technology as we can to help fight crime and ensure the safety of our citizens. Want to expand our community navigator program in order to liaise with other resources? Yes, ma'am.
Continue to expand network of supportive technology, cameras, cameras, cameras. And just real quick, can you ballpark how many are in South Side?
How many are in South Side? Ballpark to include the immediate exits and entryways after, ma'am?
No, just in the internal.
No, you'd want the in and out too.
We want the in and out too?
Yeah, it's on, it's in, they are in South Side.
I would say, ma'am, I do not have that number right in front of me. I apologize, but I can, I can do it shortly afterwards.
One of the things that the assistant chief is talking about is, you know, what we've discovered that through this program that the technology that they sold us for the artificial intelligence for the listening. We don't believe is worth the money that we're spending on it. So we'd like to repurpose those dollars and go to more cameras that do the license plate reading as opposed to the other one. Because we're just not seeing the benefit of those cameras that are listening. They're not, they're not recording.
That's great. And then we can reinvest that money into cameras, which I'm.
Increase our presence.
Advocating for more cameras in South Side.
And, and to that point, ma'am, I will say that, we're, we're going to talk about it in just a minute. But I would like to deploy more cameras in South Side and in the connecting thoroughfares. They'll have to either come in or leave if you are exiting or coming to South Side. Also, last, last little point there, we do want to expand. I, I know, I spoke about expanding the website. We want to contribute that, expand our social media presence and revamp our website. We want to get that digital footprint. It's the new world we live in. So new budget requests. I feel badass, I feel bad asking for money, but we would like to start out with five new patrol vehicles. That's the approximate cost of $37,000. The firearms, the police department has not purchased firearms in a few years. We are currently proposing a proposal to go to the council to purchase staccatos for the department. They're really good guns. They're very accurate guns. They carry a, they actually carry a lot of ammo and it would, something that we think would actually draw laterals to orgo PG. It would be pretty cool.
And firearms that we have now, they, they were here when I got here and they're still here. So, you know, now granted, they haven't been being fired every single day, but they have been used for training. They've been carried. There's wear and tear on them. It, it's time to do a replacement of our firearm inventory.
Next, we want to, we want to get a new split AC system for our report writing area slash our sergeant's office. So as you come in through the back doors of the PD, we're talking about the north side of the building. Currently, right now, I believe my office controls the air conditioning for the entire, especially this time of year where I walk in, it's cold, I turn the heat up and the sun comes out and everybody's burning up. They come in. So we're just trying to, we're trying to split that up.
Because the building is broke up into zones, how the thermostats work and it's broke up into three zones. And the thermostat for the zone where the officers sit is in the front where administration sits. So we're wearing light clothing. They're wearing heavy uniforms with ballistic vests and things like that. So they're always hot. So we need to have an independent air conditioning system so that they can, at least you can have them comfortable while they're doing their work.
The, just to place your furniture, a lot of the furniture in the building is old and beat up and we just like to replace some of it.
You can put an anvil in report writing, the cops will break it in half and nobody will know how it happened. They're, they're hard on.
The lot adjacent to the department, maybe to the south and west, but also requesting some money to purchase that. That way we can expand our parking lot. Number one, the department's growing and up between us and CAL FIRE, we'll just, we need more space. Not to mention, we have to store certain vehicles that have stored for extended periods of time. Vehicles related to homicides and things like that. And we're just, we're trying to purchase that lot to expand the space. And then hopefully down the line, you know, there's further development. I don't want to get too far down that hole. And last, I did put up there as a bullet, I do apologize, but we wanted to request more money for more cameras. Initially, we're currently trying to see if Flock will work with us and basically changing the money. We're playing, we're paying for the gun detection software and just rolling that into more cameras. But we were looking for approximately $50,000 for at least 10 more cameras. A good chunk of them, which would be oriented towards South Side.
Oh, thank you.
Now, we're asking for, to purchase the empty lot, covers the cost of the ground, but also for installation of fencing and asphalting. I mean, we're just kidding. We don't know how much it costs to do that type of stuff. If you have 110,000, somewhere around there, the extra that should come up.
And the need for the expansion.
We need it now because we're just out of parking spaces with CAL FIRE. There'll have to be some reconfiguration too and discussions with Chris about, do we really need that tower thing that's out there that I haven't seen used in years? Or is that antiquated old technology that can come out and kind of open that area up more? But that's a discussion we have to have with our fire department. This could also help us facilitate potentially the request of the fire department to move. to move their workout facility from their apparatus bay. If we change and configure our layout differently, there's a possibility we can expand the warehouses out there and put a fitness room into that warehouse and get them out of the apparatus bay to do that. So all of these things can work together.
Is that the, the lot behind Les Schwab?
Uh, no, ma'am. It's the lot to the west.
There's like this white vinyl fencing kind of all falling over, it's that lot.
As you're going south on Lincoln, you, as you approach the police department to the left, you see there's that shop.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
So I'm a visual learner. This staccato?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you might know the answer. Is that that gun, gun that we see John Wick carry?
I believe he carries one in part three or the one he used, the one he used in part four. That's a different one.
It's a different one.
That's especially reconfigured log, that's company out of, I believe, Texas or. I think he does, I think you do see one in John Wick three.
Okay, well, that's a bad gun.
Well, aside from the fact that they're pretty cool and that.
Yeah, they are.
They are actually very accurate. And, you know, as in the Marine Corps, it was, we run those night down range that we just, you know, would take care of the problem. Whereas in law enforcement, every bullet that comes out of our gun has a lawyer attached to it.
So, and the rest that we're talking about includes not only the firearm, but also the extra magazines that come with it, the necessary holster for the change-out in the officer. The air tag that goes with the camera system, so when you remove it, the holster brings the cameras on. It's a complete change-out. It isn't just, I know that sounds awful expensive for just a gun. But there's all the component pieces that go with it.
When you say, chief, when you say there's a camera, there's a cam, like a body camera, are you talking about?
Body camera and the car cameras. If you remove your firearm.
Come on, when you pull it, really?
We have sensors in our holster, but anytime you draw your finger, your body camera on.
Good enough.
And it alerts too that your gun was drawn. It's a little embarrassing.
That's great.
You know, but anyway, it works, it's a good tool for us to have.
And there's a camera for someone that's being detained in the, in the backseat?
Yes.
That's crucial.
It's going to be interesting too, if we pull, you know, our firearms. If you have a camera in your car from a neighboring agency, it will hear your cams too. I mean, so it turns on everybody's cameras when you.
Now that's transparency.
Yeah, I mean, so whoever's there, whether you're, you know, you just on an outside assist. Footage, but it's good. I mean, it really, long run, it.
It actually has a little note too on the body, kind of says gun drawn, which is, it kind of came up, I was interviewing a suspect and all these ads and people were trying them out. It's looking like gun drawn, so it has to do probably with. Chris theory. That's kind of our, our humble budget request in a nutshell. Are there any questions from the council? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Had a rest.
Good job.
Thank you.
Just more, so you know I'm leaving at 1:50.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody. Council, citizens, the fine folks that I work with. I'm here to talk to the code enforcement, our goals and priorities. These numbers, 2324, go from March of.
Oh, I'll wait.
Quiet down. You know, it told us we have to be quiet.
It's just courtesy.
Hit it wrong.
I'm a big believer in numbers. I really don't have to sell the code enforcement department, those guys feel amazing, Mark. You gotta see the photos all the time. You're on our video all the time. You can drive up and down our highways, our roadways, and you don't see hundreds of people camping along our roads.
Yes, like Chica.
We'll talk about some programs that happen. Code enforcement staff, this is from March of 23 to March of 24. I thought I'd be fair because we're in April, so we have some somewhat accurate numbers. But we opened up 1,370 cases in the past year, but we responded over 4,000 calls. Okay, these are just cases we opened. These aren't the illegal encampments we go out to trespassing calls, going out with the municipal law enforcement, the police department, the fire department and all the other areas or agencies of public works that call us out. So these are 1,370 cases that we opened up and we closed 1,232 of those cases. And we still stay right at about 95% completion rate with all of our cases. That's the compliance that we give with our citizens and commercial businesses or industrial areas that we open up these spaces. Code enforcement, one of the 70 abandoned vehicles in our city. And when we abated, that means we actually physically went out and had to tow them away. But 583 of those cases, the others were abated by either the property owner or the registered owner or now we have a system where we get ahold of the legal owner of the car and say, hey, we know where your car's at, that you've been trying to repo in the last year. And we actually just had one done on Feather River Boulevard by the carpet place that was complaining about a car being parked in a parking lot. It was slow down, the owner says, I don't care about it, we found the legal owner. They actually went out and repoed the car, which we don't have to spend any money doing it and they get their car back and are happy to hear from us. Code enforcement successfully closed 553 public nuisance cases. Public nuisance cases are one of our biggest issues and these are the people who live junk trash and debris that is in public view when you drive by their house or drive by their apartment or drive by their vacant lot. And those are the, public nuisance cases are the, the most important cases to close when it comes to fight. So when you drive around our city, you don't ride through past four or five houses that put all their trash outside, their junky cars and furniture and refrigerators and everything else. Some key accomplishments, the updating of the policy and procedures manual for the city. And this isn't the police department, they're on their own island, just for city hall, public works. The department heads got together, I sent them their old procedures. A lot of the procedures are outdated, there's still some that need to be done, but the policies are done and was approved by the. I will tell you that it was, I just want to give Dave Ritchie some, you know, recognition. He's an amazing individual to work with. Very knowledgeable, very helpful, along with Brian, of course, and I still think knows more than Dave. It's pretty close. Excellent person to work with. Never missed a meeting there. We didn't stay over an hour longer, he was there, really willing to work with. So we're in good hands, I think, with code enforcers, especially with. Completion of the Lexful management program, so we have Lexful. I did a couple of trainings last week with public works, the rest of the city. And everybody's been given the instruction on how to log into the policy manual, how to do the training. How to view the policy and procedure manuals, hopefully with the department. So that training went, went very well and we actually did see the response. And then, you know, the painting and updating install of the carpet. And, you know, there's a, you know, fall under code enforcement, you know, if it can't be done, people come to code enforcement.
There you go. Great job.
It's to get Orville, it's code enforcement in general, just seems like, you know, if you need somebody to learn to, it's, it's the code enforcement department. But I think our city hall is, you know, it's nice to have people come in the meetings. Before you just to blindfold them in the lobby and. But anyway, it's a lot nice to walk through, it's nice to see the carpet and people.
It's still snowing.
So it's nice to see. Continuing the city works clean streets program. Right now, you know, we're, we're started in June of 23 with the city works and cleaning streets ground. And it's, you know, it's been great. We were working prior, primarily with Jordan's Crossing, they have a crew with our crew from the Hope Center. And, you know, it seems like, you know, we've had a little bit of turnover. We had a couple of people that, you know, were asked not to come back for reasons. If you can't toe the line, you can't give us 100%, then you're not going to have the opportunity to hang out and work with the city because you're not going to waste the dollars on people that don't have any effort. But, you know, from 23 to March of 24, they abated almost 800,000 pounds of junk trash and debris. That was in our public view off of our city streets and alleyways and they cannot. So they're still an amazing, amazing group. They work well with public works, they do weed eating vegetation work, you know, anything that's asked of those guys. They show up and they show up ready to work. They pay attention during our safety meetings, they don't ask for a lot, you know, and they, they really work with us all. Continuing the launching of Tyler software for code enforcement. We are, we are prepared in our department to, to start that program. And that's the new software that's going to manage our, our code enforcement cases. Actually sent some employees to another county where they have the system implemented. It's been there since August of 22. And just to see how it ran and see if, if we were going in the right direction, if we formatted what we wanted properly. It looks like we're in, we're in really good shape. I will tell you that I learned, this is in Yuba County, that their code enforcement finance, planning, they have Tyler software, but they have one person that's dedicated to deal with all the updates with the software. So it is a lot. The CaliWest Impact Support Grant, that will go until February 1st of 25 and that supports, support code enforcement. Officer, myself, administrative staff for code enforcement, engineering, planning. And like I said, that's going to expire in February 1st of 25, but it will continue to support the program. New initiatives, complete the final receivership property. When I started the code enforcement program, a few years ago, we had 14 properties that went into receivership and we were down to one property. All the other 13 properties and, and a lot of these properties were in South Side, belonged to people that didn't care about the property or they belonged to the property owners. And we're going to get developers in there to purchase land, put new structures on there or clean the property. And we have one property left and it's at 1,845,000 and we're working on getting towards that. My code enforcement staff, I am a big believer in, in training. We average this last 23 to 24, we'll put in 133 hours of training. And it's important, Prop 29, or State Bill 296, that says that code enforcement is going to receive eight hours of safety training a month. If they don't receive that type of training and something happens to them, then that leaves the city liable for them being under trained. So as part of that, they will complete the Module 34 for the CACIO, the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And that will make them actual certified licensed code enforcement officers at that point. They've already completed Module 1 and Module 2. Ongoing submissions for grants for code enforcement. You know, in August, I took over the recycling coordinator overseeing that position. And there's a lot of grants that came along with that. And I'm learning that, you know, you can fill in a lot of gaps by applying for grants and getting money. It is important, even if it's only $10,000, if it's $100,000, if it's half a million dollars. Working with Amy on getting the Clean Streets grant, you know, through CDVG, you know, it was a half a million dollars, you know. And that, that fills a huge gap in maintaining our city works program and getting others involved to become the city and. My only budget request is I'm going to ask for $25,000 towards cost recovery on projects. We have properties that we are coming into that have dead property owners. And dead property owners, they don't have siblings or anybody that has any interest in the property whatsoever and to sit there and decay as a rot. And so what we want to do is write abatement warrants and be able to get an excavator in there and to abate hazards off the property and fence it off. And we have four properties right now that, that we'd like to do that. Um, the ghost house that was at the corner of Porter and, and our Porter and Spencer? Yeah. No, Myers, Porter and Myers. Anyways, that was kind of our, our target house to see how much money it would cost. And we made that and one day hold everything off and we made that for a good four grand. So when we reached out to a company and asked them what it would cost, it was between $25,000 and $30,000. So relying on our public works, code enforcement and just bringing equipment to get it done is a lot more than simple. Any questions? I know I read through that kind of.
But you give us continuous updates, you know, whether it be email or in our council meetings.
It's important, you guys see, you know.
Really appreciate that.
I think the important thing to see is to drive around our city and, you know, not seek bad things. That's the important part of it.
Thank you.
What more?
I gotta go. I gotta go, yeah. My daughter's got a softball game and I'm not going to miss it.
Okay.
I need to leave as well.
Okay. You want, you want to provide some input really quick and then we'll.
Yeah, I got, I made, I made some notes.
Okay.
You know, but I could, I could wait for Chris, she'd like to go first.
Another op?
No.
We're going to drop below a quorum too with these two lead.
Okay.
Well, I could, I could be about 10 minutes late to this. So I mean, if you want, if you want to roll, then then I could give my observations afterwards.
Where's she at in the lineup?
I've asked.
You showed play.
Yeah, where's she at in the lineup? Yeah, exactly.
I haven't heard. Thank you for sticking around. At 2 o'clock.
Do you want to provide any input? In another way, you can, you can email me.
Mail.
Yeah. Do that.
I have to leave in 10 minutes. So.
You're late. You want to zip through? Fred has a ton of stuff, but I know you'd be able to see it too, so.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. And I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. So the key accomplishments in 2023 for public works was the same park fence was finally installed and completed. We're still waiting on some signage for the park. One of the heavier lifts that we did in the last several months, sanitary emergency response plan. It's been revised and updated to reflect current state regulations and the general orders for us to run our collection system. We've required, acquired the new corporation yard. I'm very happy that we hired a new public works manager, Jamie McGuire, who's been doing a fantastic job as well. We closed about a week and a half ago on our pavement management system, our PMP, and should have some in front of council, first council meeting in May, which is going to be really great for us to start ranking our streets. Other accomplishments were the central hall reporting smoke and heat detectors at all, all of our stands. We had dumb smoke detectors in our building, so if there's a fire at night or off hours, it'd be too late by the time we knew there was a fire at the lot house. So this now reports to somebody. We've established, reestablished a meaningful relationship with BCA. State Project 160 is going to start in early May, maybe a little bit sooner. And the next bullet is more kudos to Amy and I really thank you, Amy, because it was a heavy lift to get that MOU gun on Oprah Road and without you, it'd be different when I got there. So thank you, I appreciate that. And we've re-normalized relationships with the State Water Resource Control Board. We had a sanitary sewer audit, the first one we've had in the city since 2011. Still waiting to hear back from their findings, but that relationship is normalized. Key initiatives that we're looking at doing in 2425 is gathering the data and scoring our streets for resurfacing projects citywide. This will be a new program, the regional fog, fats, oils and greases grease program. Ideally, we're going to be working in collaboration with the SCOR, TWIST and LOPA and the City of Orville. This is mandated by the state. You're going to start seeing stickers on our large sewer equipment saying, don't trash our toilet, you know. Greases don't belong in the drain, those type of things, those are all part of the community outreach. It's very important for us to operate our system with that type of outreach. Still working on a new computer work order management system, also known as a CMMS system. That RFP should be completed by the end of this month, so we can get it out for, to see what's in the streets. And the pursuit of ATP grant funding for Table Mountain and Washington Avenue Corridor. It's going to be remaining a constant theme through 2024 or 25. Other key initiatives, implementing the PMP recommendations for CIPs and smaller asphalt restoration projects. Tier two in particular, which will be off of. The new street lighting at memory street and city parking lot adjacent to mug shots and levee. That's currently a dark spot. I've had multiple complaints on the start and we're looking at getting some new lighting there. Development of a CIP RFP for the lot house, Chinese temple and pioneer museums. Those are, this is kind of an important one, this is a new one. The lot house is suffering from a significant amount of dry rot, paint, the roof. There's a lot of issues that are all the attic dormers, not all of them, but several were broken, they're exposed, which is going to allow rodents, bats, raccoons, mice, they get in there, it's going to really start destroying the property. So we need to really address the painting and the dry rot and getting those things closed up. With the Chinese temple, we have many, many artifacts that are donated. With the Chinese temple, we have many, many artifacts that are donated by a family, but Summer City, they've been on display for over 50 years. And some of these displays actually need to be taken down and rested. And we're looking at potentially getting a conservator to come in to show us the best practices, how to display our things at our museums, how we're doing it right, and how we need to fix it. With new lighting potentially, because fluorescent lighting is harmful to garments, for example, and the way they're hung on mannequins is very destructive to some of the older clothing. So we're going to look at some of those processes. And obviously, the courtyard infill work is continuing, public works has worked with Accualarm and IT, we did a lot of trenching, got a lot of conduit in the ground. For, to be ready for IT to pull fiber, so their new courtyard will have fiber optics and good wifi hotspots out there, so we actually get out there. It's going to be a great place. So with my budget request, sorry, I'm going a little fast because I know we're all crammed for time. One of the big ones I'm looking at is getting the public works sewer operator one, turn that into a flex, a flex one, two position. So that way we can promote people up into a higher pay band to help with employee retention, rewarded on merit once they get their commercial driver's license, they get their required wastewater operator license and they're doing really good. It's a good way for us to promote them up to the next band for, it's a good acknowledgement and it's just, it's a good practice.
I support that.
Thank you. With the state wastewater, they require us to have two first responder trucks. They're basically 3,500 or 2,500 chassis, 3,500 is a little bit better because it's small crane. Our current truck, one of two, is unit 52, it's 32 years old. It's not suited for sewer duty anymore, sewer team has resistance taking this thing out because it's from 1992. It's just not as reliable as it once was, that truck really does. Replaced. We're also asking $50,000 for the mastique scene rental and associated materials because we did that pilot program down on Fifth. It's been very good and we're looking at different ways to hit some of those Tier 1 and Tier 2 projects on the streets.
I stopped and looked at that mastique and I like the way it feels, I like the way it looks, I like the video that we seen, I seen a video of it in operation. This is a really good thing. I would love to see this as part of a. Tier 1, implement that in Tier 1 and give them that tool.
That's what we're working to, we want to try the machine more in trial air before we ask and come back and ask for a lot of money. That's kind of the direction we're going for. Also asking for additional $40,000, this would be split between sewer and the public works for the, for us to buy radar trailers and message boards so we can do our own traffic studies. We can get out there in trouble spots where there's speeding and we're doing new, actually do traffic studies for ATP grants and others grants, that's $30,000. Other budget requests that I'm asking for are wastewater operators, their budget training is, their training budget is, it's very low. I'm asking for $10,000 so they can get all the required training that we need to do with them with continuing education units, confined space. Multiple different training opportunities that we're not actually doing and we can actually send folks out of town as a somewhat of a reward to get some great training and go to conferences and actually learn new materials, new approaches, and how to operate the sewer system. Asking for the same thing for Streets Department, I'd like to explore the idea of getting them, the public works, Parks Department, Streets Department into the American Public Works Association. Maybe a membership there, there's a certification process that our public works team could do. It just gives us a little higher of an elevation that we're a good organization, we have good SOPs, we have a strong way of doing business and it's just, it's a good process.
Question, every department has a monthly $10,000 fund, right, that they can absorb for whatever they need, am I right? $10,000?
That's new to me.
No?
I'm sorry, I want a question.
So each department has approximately how much a month?
It's all varied.
So it varies? Okay, it varies, all right.
Some of these conferences, wastewater in particular, it needs to go to, there's a lot of critical information, networking, that can actually be obtained in that environment, so it's very beneficial. We're also asking for $500,000 for the Tier 2 paving fund to actually do some more localized streets.
Is that enough?
I think that's. I got one more slide, guys, I'm sorry, I'm a little heavy on everybody, so just as a recap, the continuation of a fire mechanic at Cal Fire, about $100,000 a year. Salary savings through keeping one of our mechanic spots open. Our pavement maintenance program, software is about $75,000. Our fog program, I'm estimating about $10,000, I'm thinking that's going to be a little bit cheaper than that. And that could buy us time on the B-line and other places to advertise, don't trash toilet in the fog program. CMMS, I have $75,000 in there. CMMS, computerized maintenance management system, that's required by the state, we own and operate a collection system, we have to have this work order management system and electronic files and we currently don't have that. If the state wants to come after us, that's a good animal for them to beat us up on our sewer system. When the regulators were here right before Christmas, I told them we were working on RFP and that we would get one out this year. We just want to stay on the good graces of the state, so that number's an estimate, so we'll go from there. And again, capital improvement projects for the House of the Chinese Temple and the Pioneer. Lot House is for paint, dry rot, get the water type pieces taken care of, make sure the rodents are out of the attic and to make sure we're displaying our artifacts right. That's it.
So just really quick, on the next, I think, four or five slides, there's a handful of things here, it's kind of the summary of what's been presented.
Yeah.
The items in red are kind of ones that we figured, like, we really don't have any choice, we have to do those. The items in green are kind of other funding sources that we've identified, and there's probably more options here that we didn't have all four, the fire apparatuses there, it's in green, but maybe we could get another one there. So really, the green ones, again, capital asset, we probably have funding in our capital asset replacement fund to do like the, some of these capital asset requests, so it's not all. Somebody's having monies available for them, so what we were going to talk about next is kind of like, if those things aside, where are the priorities of the council? What are some things on this list, these five sheet pages here, that you feel are the highest priority for you, or are there things that are on this list, are there things you'd like to add? I know you may have to run, so we can still talk until we go down to three, and once we get down to three, then we can email it to me, information.
Roads, roads, more roads. Okay, last year it was, you know, customer service and apparatus and you guys have done a good job with that, so roads, roads, more roads. Number one on my list of what I'd like to see, two would be with the police department, both the chiefs, I know their hearts and they want more hires, they want new hires, they want laterals. MLE with emphasis on police presence and foot patrols and continued community engagement. I'd also, I'll omit that right now. And then I'd also, with emphasis on traffic, okay, traffic patrol. Does that mean we have to email now?
Unfortunately, we're going to.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a forum, so.
Right, we're done.
And then continue to have dialogues with three?
So, yeah, there's no reason that you can't receive input directly as long as there's no discussion, it's not really.
Should I report out at this point?
Yeah, that's by operation of law, that means adjourned because you don't have.
Right, yeah, so.
There are a couple options. To a future date.
How about to the, just the regular 16th of April?
Staff, give direction to staff to agendize an item, or you can opt to send your feedback to Brian and he'll bring it back when it's appropriate.
Okay.
Individually on these priorities. If there is a resumption though, if you want to resume this conversation in a meeting format that happens more than five days from today, like you're adjourned today and, you know, you're presuming. You'd have to re-agendize, you know, a special meeting for five days, if it's within five days, you just have to post when that's going to be on the door here within 24 hours.
So what's your preference, Brian, would you like us just to?
I think if we adjourn now and then we receive your input informally, then I could ask the other council members, I know the mayor had some, I'd say, I have that. We can receive that and we can work the budget, you know, there'll be more generals and more bites, we'll have more budget discussion.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and adjourn this meeting now at 2:00. And the staff will receive input from the council as deemed necessary. And otherwise, we will be having a regularly meeting at Orville City Council, April 16th at 4:00 PM, 2024.
City administration. So that's official, we're done, but unofficially, we can still talk, so.
I'll just go through my.